Is there room for it out in the?
I already know.
Very interesting.
Oh, yeah.
It's always a. There's a room for it out in the.
I already know. Just pick a little sample.
That's right.
Thanks.
My number one choice. I know it's far away. Never.
Do you have a follow up?
Want to target being out of the way as much as anybody else.
I'm going to do that.
Guy of course a lot.
Talking about. Oh, my dad. It don't matter.
Yeah.
That's.
I can speak. How is it? Yeah.
I like that idea.
You're part of my house fans. Tropic Slush. In John's parking lot.
Because we know maybe this.
Yeah.
It's gonna be an area that doesn't come with actual.
Sure, one word. It's not just something we're talking about spending money on. Meant to the experience of the six years. We were trying to hear some music and sonic concert. There's years. Part of it. Well, we had. I've never seen.
Hey, I want to listen to the end of that conversation.
They're excited for the people up in the back.
Okay, yeah. I'm trying to listen in on your conversation.
We're just trying to move there.
Interesting.
Okay.
Just try and find a place to go near the dirt.
Okay. All right, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is March 11th, 2025. And we're beginning our meeting at 4:33 PM in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present. Councilman, Councilmember Hune, Councilmember Norfeld, Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Whitstone, Councilmember Harmon, Councilmember Christensen. Okay. Myself, we're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kammick. Did you see that?
He stood a second.
Well, now move to our minutes. I'll turn those to the council for discussion or a motion.
Move the minutes. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. A second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I stand approved. We'll review our tonight's agenda. Do we have any changes or anything we need to do?
No, ma'am.
Hey, did the council have any questions on tonight's agenda? Hey. Our awards ceremonies and proclamations. Nicole, would you like to go over those?
Yeah, so we have a student from American Preparatory Academy. She is, she has been named as the National Merit Analyst. So to get that designation, you have to take a preliminary SAT test as well as a National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Fifteen thousand finalists across the United States, which is less than 1% of high school seniors. And Elise is the only one from West Valley City this year, so she, we'd like to recognize her accomplishments.
Great. Do you want to read that one for us?
I will do it.
You will?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, we'll go to our resolutions and begin with Chief Evans. For Resolution 25-39, an interlocal agreement.
Thank you. This agreement comes up about every five years. We've been with the Metro Agency for, I think, this be about the 20th year. So this agreement's just an update to it. Really, the only thing that changed in there is some of the committees and the open meeting laws is really what the justice of the change was from the past one. And that's the only thing that's really changed in the agreement.
Hey, any questions of chief? Okay, thank you so much. So we'll now have a virtual presentation for Resolution 25-40 for the purchase of sand filters. And we'll turn it to Candace Whitaker. She's just joining us now. Okay.
Candace, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Okay, so I am Candace Whitaker, Assistant Parks Recreation Director for West Valley City and Family Fitness Center Director. So I am presenting today on sand filters for the Centennial Outdoor Pool. This past winter, one of the sand filters cracked externally. And due to low water flow, we've been able to continue filtering water through that filter. However, as we gear up for summer season and we're starting to ramp up our filtration, there's a chance that the water filter will break all the way through. And according to Health Department requirements, we will not be allowed to utilize that pool. And that will result in a huge loss of revenue and memberships for the Centennial Outdoor Pool. And so we have done some engineering to kind of expedite the ordering process and installation of the new sand filters. And we've worked with Stratton and Bratt, who are on state contract, it's MA 3621, to determine the equipment that we're going to need to purchase and an installation price. By purchasing the filters directly through a local distribution company rather than through a contractor, we're going to save the city about $30,000. The sand filters from our Stark Filters, they are $143,903.65. And the work that Stratton and Bratt will do is going to be $115,723.67. And so the staff recommend the approval of the agreement with SCP for the purchase of the sand filters and to Stratton and Bratt for the demolition, reconfiguration, plumbing, and installation of the sand filters at the Centennial Outdoor Pool. So the total cost of the project will be about $259,627. And we have $75,000 to put toward this project. And so we're asking for $184,607 to assist with this project. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions from the council?
I do. How many filters are there?
There are currently ten. Ten. And this reconfiguration will bring it to six. They don't allow 10 anymore.
The Health Department, and that is they?
Yes, I'm sorry, the Health Department, yes.
Okay. Okay, I don't see any other questions.
Thank you so much, Candace.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll now turn the time to Mr. Wilson for Resolution 25-41, betterment agreement.
Yeah, good afternoon. Kobe Wilson with the Engineering Division. So you're all familiar with the work that UDOT has been doing on 3200 West under SR 201 for the bridge deck rehab out there. We've been working with UDOT and Salt Lake City to include some betterments with that project. The active transportation plan that the city put together back in 2020 identified the need for safety improvements of that interchange to get bicyclists and pedestrians through that interchange. So when working with UDOT over the last couple of months, they have agreed to include some of that work in their project now. The overall cost for that work is a little over a million dollars. UDOT is coming up with about a million dollars to do it and has requested a hundred thousand dollar betterment from West Valley City and Salt Lake City. So we are recommending that we participate in that and execute this betterment with UDOT.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we have our consent agenda that has two items. One is our typical right of way purchase agreement deed, and the other one is an appointment to the Planning Commission. Anybody have any questions on those?
I know Pauline.
Okay.
And she works, it's probably in her bio, I didn't read it because I know Pauline. She works for Bluffdow in their planning department, so I think she'd be a great a great pick for our planning commission.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll go to. Does anybody want to move the resolutions to the consent agenda for next lines, regular meeting? Is that still the 25th, right?
Correct.
Okay. Nobody? Okay. We'll do those separately. We'll now go to our communications and turn the time over to Mr. Hill for our legislative wrap up.
All right. Brandon Hill with the Legal Department and Dave Stewart is visiting as well. And he did a great job for us this session. And so I said, what do you get the man who has everything? And I said, I know, a trip to visit a legislative body. So I offered him, I told him admission was free just for him, so. So that's cool. All right, this is Legislature 2025. What is the best news of all? It's over. You can trust my boy Austin Reeves when he tells you it is over. And we have a lot of bills that passed. And so like, this is the time of year when everybody cries and moans about, oh, my gosh, there's so many bills and there's so many more than there were the year before. So there are a lot of bills. It's pretty much in line with what we've seen before. So 917 total, 582 passed. And what's interesting is, as people talk about the number of bills increasing, they are slightly, but it's been a decade since we've been under 500. And so this is not a new thing and it's not likely to change. One of the things that was pretty interesting this year is we had a very young legislature with lots of freshmen, lots of a few new faces in leadership. And I think that showed at times, it was a little bit more of a bumpy ride sometimes than usual. But we, we're going to see how that shakes out next year and if that trend continues with younger people having less experience and maybe not not having as much institutional knowledge. It was interesting to see how some of the bigger fights sort of dissipated toward the end of the session, and then some of them absolutely did not. And so the judiciary battle kind of seemed like that was just going to be World War III, and then all of a sudden it wasn't. And it kind of resolved itself. The immigration discussion sort of ended up that way as well, where there were a lot of bills that kind of on the fringes addressed immigration. But the reality is, the problem is the same as it's always been, which is we're not sure what's happening at the federal level. We don't know how that's going to impact us, and I think everybody kind of realized that. And the union fight just kept getting worse and worse and worse. And that did not deescalate in any form or fashion. We've already got a referendum filed on that, and so we'll see if they can get your signatures. And if so, then that's going to appear on your next general election ballot. Um. It was really a good year for us at the Capitol, honestly. And it's really weird to be giving good news. I'm so bad at that. I'm really good at giving bad news in a friendly and approachable way. I'm not sure what to do when the news is mostly just good. But I'll do my best. So I think the top item is a lot of bills that threatened local land use authority either died or kind of changed into something that was more friendly. And so you see bills like the House bills there that would have mandated R14 and then R16 zoning and housing in all commercial zones. Those didn't go anywhere. The weird agritourism bill didn't go anywhere. The Senate bills either died or changed into something we could live with. And so that was a really good trend. It's not one you can count on every year going forward, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. But for this year, that stuff went well. SB 337, so we talked about the Beehive Bill, and we talked about Brandon's only visit to an NBA game. That bill was really wild, so it changed pretty dramatically in about the first 48, 72 hours after it came out. And so a local consent requirement was added, which was by far the biggest deal for us, right? So if a community wants one of these projects and they want to partner with the state, that's great. We don't want it jammed down the throat. That bill started taking on water from a lot of different sources, and it was really amazing how fast it happened. Dave, would you say like 48 hours? And it was incredible because there's always a voodoo bill that just like goes down for every reason and everybody hates it. And it's really rare that that's a bill that's important to leadership and the governor, and that's what happened. I think the better news on that bill is not necessarily what happened with that, but that local consent ended up in the bill. And even when it died, that was still something that was there. And so that will be a discussion in interim, and we're going to have to continue to fight for that. We were able to get some additional funding for 40th West, so 1.95 million in new money. That is all Dave Stewart's work. Public Works told me what a good project was. I told Dave and Dave made it happen. So the two bills where that funding ultimately ended up, had 15 subs and featured a lot of, okay, is this still in there? Is this still in there? Okay, good, it's still in there. And then they vote on it. So we got that done. Great work by Dave, as well as the next item, which was HB 465. So we talked about this. This was the bill that would essentially have DPS doing homeless intervention at city expense in first-class cities. And so the bill was directed at Salt Lake. We were just kind of catching some stray bullets there, as was Sandy, as was St. George. And Dave was really helpful working with the sponsor. Everybody agreed that West Valley did not need to be in this bill, and ultimately we were not. The bill that passed was a lot more livable for Salt Lake, and it's much more livable for us because we're not in it at all. So that was a great thing. SB 277, so that was the getting rid of the Records Committee and having a law trained ahead of that of state records doing records appeals. This, I think, is a good thing for everybody. The Records Committee, as it is, is not functioning. It takes months to hear an appeal. The decisions are very frequently not based on what the law actually says, and it doesn't serve anybody's interests. And I think, being a government guy, I'm obviously seeing it from that side of the equation. But from the requester's side of the equation, I think that's equally true. If you want a record, the city says no, and you appeal it, you shouldn't have to wait eight, 10 months for a decision. You know, we need to figure that out fast, and I think that's going to make that happen. And the various interim bills that were the land use task force bills, some housing bills from the Commission on Housing Affordability, those got through and were mostly fine. There's always stuff you don't love in those bills, but it was all right. The first bullet point is really the biggest thing. We didn't have the kinds of terrible things happen that you always fear. And may see something about my personality that that's like a really happy thing for me. I'm just like, oh, great, nothing bad happened. But that's kind of the story when it comes to the legislature sometimes. The second point is something that kind of crystallized for me a little talking with John about the various moving pieces with these districts. And so you've got SB 333, 336, you got the Fair Park District and the Olympic Venues kind of district. What's really interesting, and neither of those really have any significant impacts for us. The Fair Park obviously doesn't. The Olympic Venue one doesn't either. It's a ski resort bill, essentially is what it is. But I think 20 years ago or 10 years ago, we might have said, oh, that's the kind of thing RDAs do. And what we're seeing is more and more of these different kinds of districts with different state oversight being created that are outside of those traditional tools. And I think it's fair to wonder what that looks like going forward. I don't know that anybody knows the answer to that. There's also some continued dissatisfaction on the housing front. Nobody's really happy, and the goals sort of keep shifting. And I don't know that anybody is really consistent about what they want to see and what counts as a solution here. So there's a general sense that everybody has that housing is too expensive. There's a general sense that something ought to be done. There's not much consensus about exactly what that is. And so the legislature did not move forward with some of the more aggressive proposals in this space. But nobody's really happy with what did happen, and nobody feels like what happened this year is something that we can say, yeah, that, that problem's checked off the list. And so that's going to continue to be an issue for us for the foreseeable future. So the trends that we're seeing that are worth watching over the next 12 months and much further than that. So the first thing is this, what we talked about with the districts. There's an increasing state role in these projects that are significant in local communities. So you see like the Beehive Bill, as it originally was, whatever the second iteration of that looks like, the Fair Park. You've got downtown Salt Lake. You've got the Olympic Venue districts. You've got, on the smaller scale, things like public infrastructure districts. And there tends to be more of a state role in these projects that are local and often funded with local tax dollars. And so in the Olympic Venue bill, for instance, SB 333, you've got sales taxes that are imposed by the local government. So it's you guys who are passing the tax and getting eggs thrown at you, but you've got a largely state people board overseeing that. And so that, that's a trend that's shown up over the last few sessions and is likely to keep doing that. We don't know in terms of how assertive the legislature is going to be going forward. This year was a bumpy ride on that front. So initially, at the start of the session, we kind of had war declared on everybody, from the judiciary to immigrants, to city councils, to you name it. And in the end, most of that stuff didn't go through, but there's still a sense that the legislature wants to direct more and more outside of the lane of things they've typically done. And so it's going to be really interesting to see how that happens. And in particular, how the judiciary and Beehive stuff shakes out. I think that is still a story to be written. And the last thing is really interesting to me, and it's this frustration with the housing and homelessness issue. But there's also some issue fatigue that's building here. Sometimes issue fatigue is your friend, sometimes it's not. And I have no idea in this case whether it's our friend or not. People are upset, but they're also kind of tired of the issue. So with homelessness in particular this year, we had a lot of legislators who are just done with this issue. They don't want to appropriate more money to it, and they don't want to talk about it anymore. On the other hand, you also have things like 465 where there's obviously still a problem, and people aren't happy with how it's being handled. And I think the really aggressive nature of HB 465, as it initially came out, is a result of this tension, right? Where we're so sick of talking about this issue. We're sick of it. We're sick of it. We got to do something. We got to do something big. And ultimately, I think that bill ended up in a fine place, but it's fair to see how that's, wonder how that's all going to play out going forward. And looming over all of that, you've got the state desire to see more building, more, more development, more, more of everything. And you've got local communities that are a little more ambivalent sometimes, including all of you. Or sometimes this works, sometimes it makes sense, sometimes you don't think it does. And in the past, I think the state has generally seen that as stuff that, well, I wish they would do this, or I wish they would do that. And now there's a little more of a desire to assert themselves. All in all, honestly, we did a lot better than I thought we would. It was a good session. We were able to have a lot of success. Dave deserves a ton of credit for that. The League of Cities did a great job. Those guys work really, really, really hard. And we're not always easy clients, especially when we don't agree with each other. But those guys did a great job, and I think, I think we had a good year. And we'll see if next year is a good year, but for right now, we're not going to worry about that. So any questions about the session, how it went? Anger, rage? But like I told you guys, I really appreciate you guys being so easy to work for on this stuff. I, I have a colleague who I mentioned who doesn't have that same experience, and her life is way worse than mine. So thank you all for, for that.
I have a question about the bill 330. Can you elaborate a little bit more?
330?
On the land?
Oh, 337, the Beehive Bill.
Is it 337 or 330? It's about the take more control than.
Yeah.
337?
337, yeah. And so what that bill initially would have, the first draft of that basically said, the state can designate these three projects a year where no local control of any kind applies. And so we'll do the whole deal through this Beehive Development Agency, and they get to decide everything. It wasn't clear, it seemed like the goal was much bigger projects, right? So the goal, we're not thinking like, in theory, a 23-house subdivision, right? But, so the goal is bigger projects, but the bill language didn't really say that and didn't really clarify what that meant. And so for some places, that could be a really big deal, right? So if you think of something like Daybreak, just being plopped down someplace that didn't want it at all. That was the fear initially. And so the bill then moved to require local consent. Everybody freaked out about that. Nobody wanted that to happen. The sponsor was very, you know, acknowledged that concern and made those changes. And then ultimately, a lot more people were angry about the bill. And it became one of those issues where a lot of people were mad and weren't quite sure why they were mad. The committee hearing was really interesting, and there was a lot of public pressure on that bill. And it went from seeming like it was greased on Friday to being absolutely dead on Monday night. It's is kind of a, kind of an interesting show if you're into that sort of thing.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks for all your work.
Oh, happy, happy to do it. It's, I would say it beats college basketball, but it doesn't. But I will now return to that detail.
Thank you, Brandon. All right, we'll now turn the time to Mr. Pastrick for our station area plan update. This will take the rest of our time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Steve Pastrick, Community Development Director. So as Brandon alluded to, a few years ago, the legislature asserted itself and passed HB 462, which required cities to prepare and adopt what are called stationary plans. So those are plans that address the half-mile area surrounding light rail stations. And those plans are required to be adopted by the end of this year. So in order to comply with state law, we did secure some grant funding and hired a consulting team comprised of WSP, MHTN Architects, and Leland Consulting to help us prepare those plans. We've been working on those for several months now. We're at a point where we have for each of those three areas, or the three station areas, we have two different scenarios we'd like to present to you tonight for your consideration and for discussion. And so with that, that brief introduction, I'll invite Christian Snalgrove, who's with WSP up to go through the presentation. He also has with him Ryan Wallace, who's with MHTN Architects, and Matt Seville with WSP. And I'll be on standby too for questions as we go through this. So, Christian.
Thank you, Steve, and thanks for having us here today. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm going to be fairly brief, going through many of these slides because most importantly, I want to get to the discussion portion and really hear from you all and hear your opinions on the scenarios that we are going to be looking at today. First, I'm going to go over some additional introductions of the study team and some of the different personnel that are involved. I'm going to give a little more detail on project background, go through some of the planning process that's been completed thus far and kind of where that planning process is going. And then most importantly, going to delve into the station area scenarios for the three station areas that you see listed on the screen. And as I'm going through any of these slides, like I mentioned, I'll go fairly quick, but throughout the discussion, if we need to return to any of them, just to review them or to get any more information, we can absolutely, we can absolutely do that. I just want to briefly acknowledge the diverse team that made these plans possible. Number one is, you know, West Valley City, both, you know, as our client and for being the primary driving force behind the preparation of these plans. Also want to acknowledge the Utah Transit Authority and the Wasatch Front Regional Council, both as kind of key advisory partners throughout the planning process thus far. And for WFRC in particular, for being the funding partner, so providing the funding that makes this plan possible. Steve mentioned, I'm Christian Snalgrove, I'm with WS, WSP, I have Ryan Wallace with MHTN Architects. I know on the line, we have David Fisk from the Leland Consulting Group and also Matt Sybil with, with WSP. And then a special shout out to Ryan and his team for preparing the visuals and putting together the scenarios that you're going to, that you're going to see today. Just to provide a little bit of context, I want to answer one question to start. So what is a station area plan? Broadly speaking, it's a plan that's focused around a fixed guideway, public transit station. In this case, the tracks green line stations in West Valley City. So the overall intent of these plans is to try to try to plot a course for where development or different transportation improvements may, you know, how they might occur or where they might occur in the future. Second question I want to answer, and Steve kind of alluded to this already, you know, why do we prepare these plans? The first case, Steve mentioned, first answer to that question is because the state requires it. The state requires that these plans be prepared, that they address the four goals that you see on the screen. So housing, sustainable environmental conditions, access to opportunities and increasing transportation choices and, and connections. But the second answer, and really the most important answer, is that public transit is a key amenity and a way for people to go about their daily lives. And so it's great that the city is thinking proactively about how to integrate public transit into the community and how to make sure that these station areas can fully reach their potential, you know, whatever that potential might be. So I want to give a little bit more detail on the planning process itself. So the three station areas that we are looking at are Decker Lake Station Area, Redwood Junction Station Area and the River Trail Station Area. All three unique, unique station areas. The first one, Decker Lake bounded on the west by I two fifteen and on the south by thirty-fifth South. And the key called amenity at the heart of Decker Lake is the Maverick Center, moving northeast up to Redwood Junction. We have Redwood Road running directly through, directly through the station area. Kind of a key landmark for Redwood Junction is Redwood Elementary School. And finally, going northeast up to the River Trail Station Area, kind of unique among all three of these already unique station areas. Kind of a tranquil residential area with great recreational amenities as the Jordan River Trail and the Redwood Trailhead Park. So a little bit about the planning process, just fundamentally, this has been a city-led effort, both in the sense of the city itself and different stakeholder and different stakeholders and members of the public. So the scenarios that you're about to see are reflective of all of the activities that you see on, on the screen. So lots of research that goes into the existing conditions, working with a steering committee that's comprised of city staff, local developers and members of community groups, and also just other kind of engagement processes that have happened with the public and other stakeholder groups thus far. But that is not, that's not it. Just last week, we spoke with the Planning Commission and received a lot of great feedback from them. As I move through the various scenarios, I'll kind of weave in some of the feedback that we've heard, that we heard from them for your, for context with you all. And then in addition to, you know, our meeting today, we also have a public open house scheduled for next week where we're really looking to get the public's input about what scenarios they like or different elements of the scenarios that they like or do not like. One thing I want to emphasize and I'll emphasize it a few times, is that these scenarios that you see are not, are not final. There is a good chance that these will evolve and really kind of a key determinant of how they evolve. And if they evolve is really the feedback we hear from you all, feedback we heard from the Planning Commission and what we hear from the public. And so I'm going to skip through a few slides that just provide more detail on some of the, on some of the points I've already, I've already mentioned. But as I've said before, we need to return to any of this just for more information, we can absolutely, absolutely do that. So before we get into the station area scenarios themselves, again, I want to mention that these are really what-if scenarios for each station area. These are not concrete plans about what must happen in each station area. And they'll very likely evolve based on the feedback that we receive in the coming weeks and that we have already received. Second thing I want to mention, again, Steve already kind of touched on this, is that this, what we're attempting to do is to balance state requirements for investigating some of those elements that are contained in the House bill with local conditions and local feedback that we've received and seen throughout, throughout the planning process. So the scenarios that you're going to see generally fall into two buckets, scenario one and scenario two. Scenario one are the scenarios that are a little more in line with the existing character of the, of the station areas. Or a scenario two is, is a little different and involves more high-impact, high-investment changes to, to each scenario, to each station area. And so I'm going to be covering two aspects of each, of each scenario. The first are the, are different land use scenarios where you'll see different, all different land uses and in different locations and different intensities in each station area. And I'll also go through transportation improvements that have been identified throughout the planning process. But I'll note that those transportation improvements that I just mentioned, those are irrespective of scenario. And so when viewing each scenario, you know, we'll get through the discussion, but I also want you to be thinking, looking at each scenario and thinking through are there certain elements of each scenario that you like or dislike? Are there certain elements that should be removed, should be changed or really need to stay? Are there certain ones that are non-starters for whatever reason? And then just finally, of the two scenarios, is there one that you prefer overall? And then it's okay if that, if that answer is different depending on the specific location within each, within each station area. Turning first to River Trail Station. I'm going to be focusing on three key portions of the station area. The first is the Roots Charter High School Farm. The second is the station platform and the area directly around the station platform. And after Redwood Trailhead Park. And finally, the Chesterfield Neighborhood. And then before each, before each scenario, I'm just going to show some examples of the types of developments that are currently contained in each scenario. Just want to pause on this slide just for a little bit, just for you all to look at each image and kind of imprint in your mind of what we are talking about when we mention all these different land use types. So the first is the Roots Charter High School Farm. Now, the key difference between each scenario is in scenario one, and if you'll recall, this is the more low-impact scenario. The residential development is primarily focused on small lot, single-family houses. Whereas in scenario two, it's comparatively more dense. It's more of a focus on townhome development with that central park boulevard going through the center of the lot. Looking at the area around the station platform itself and Redwood Trailhead Park. In scenario one, comparatively little development compared to scenario two, in fact, almost none. Whereas in scenario two, both a focus on multifamily residential development and then with some townhomes in the southern end of the existing footprint of the Redwood Trailhead Park. Now, what we heard from the Planning Commission on this one specifically is they were generally supportive of the multifamily surrounding the station platform, but they did not prefer putting townhomes to essentially, you know, cut off part of the Redwood Trailhead Park. They would prefer to maintain the current footprint of, of the park as it currently is. And finally, turning to the Chesterfield Neighborhood, what you'll immediately notice that there is not much of a difference in the two scenarios. That is because we are kind of in the middle of an ongoing conversation about kind of what the appropriate level of density in this, in this area is. Most of the feedback we receive from the Planning Commission and most of the conversations we have been having are focused on the center image label, some density. Not full, not fully redeveloping any, any lot, but finding different opportunities to use alleys and small stub streets to find strategic opportunities to, you know, to add, to add new development without wholesale redevelopment. And finally, turning to the transportation improvements in River Trail. Free, I'll focus on three key areas in River Trail. Uh, one thing I want to mention is you'll see both solid and dotted lines. The dotted lines in particular are as possible connections and improvements subject to land avail, land availability and, you know, coordination with existing homeowners. So these are viewed as definitely long-term and, you know, just as the opportunity comes up. A few key improvements in the River Trail Station Area. One is street grid improvements, particularly near the Roots Charter High, the Roots High School Farm and in the Chesterfield Neighborhood. We're just finding ways to make the street network in these areas more, more connected. And then finally, adding new bike pad improvements along twenty-three twenty-south. This is the road that runs between Redwood Road and east over to the Redwood Trailhead Park. Finally, just exploring the potential for a bridge over the Jordan River into South Salt Lake. Now, specifically on this bridge, we've recently received information from UTA about a few things. One is due to the geometry of the river. There's a bend in the river at this exact location. There's certain requirements with the Army Corps of Engineers that are, are a challenge to work through when it comes to building a structure over the Jordan River here. And then we've also heard that there are some potential issues with, you know, with ownership or with ownership on the east side of the river that will be a barrier to constructing a bridge as well.
So what is the goal of the bridge?
The goal of the bridge would be connecting to, I think it's Ninth West, but essentially creating a new east-west connection instead of essentially the natural that the Jordan River is right.
So you know, there's the bridge that is over by two oh one that connects. You can take your bike from seventy-two hundred all the way to the mouth of immigration using that bridge.
Right.
And it connects to this park as well. The trail system does.
The conversation that we've been having thus far has been, this is actually a vehicular, a vehicular bridge.
Oh, a vehicular bridge.
Right. So moving southwest to Redwood Junction Station, key three areas we're going to focus on are the current site of Redwood Elementary. The very southern edge of the Chesterfield Neighborhood along the existing tracks, green line tracks. And then directly south of the Redwood Junction Station Platform, kind of in those, the, the large area of surface parking lots and high-rise office development. So I just want to pause here again, just to, for you all to imprint some of these development types in your mind. Turning first to Redwood Elementary, key difference between two scenarios. Scenario one, more of a focus on townhomes, whereas in scenario two, more of a focus on high desk, on high-density residential. So essentially apartments. One note I'll make is that we've already received some feedback from city staff on, you'll see in scenario one, there's a flex industrial and office on the northern portion of the site. Reassessing feedback that that probably does not match with the goal of adding residential development there. And so we're looking at the possibility of changing some of that to more townhomes. And then the portion that's along Redwood Road itself, changing that to more, to more retail. One other note, kind of the key thing we heard from the Planning Commission on this site in particular was, I guess, a skepticism of townhomes. Townhomes on this site with the thinking that apartments would be more of a, kind of a controlled environment where kind of maintenance and care of the property is concerned.
Do you have an estimate, excuse me, estimate of units in each scenario?
I guess I'll call on David Fisk on the line to provide a little more information on that. Like there's a procedure for
Let me just unmute him one. Okay, you should be able to unmute your microphone now.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Somebody says.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. Thanks. So the question is, do we have any estimates for, for number of units across the scenarios? We do, we've, we've ran those numbers for each of these, these alternatives. Sorry, let me just actually pull those figures up to share with you all. Currently have them sort of across each scenario, so not consolidated for this specific elementary school site. At the moment, though, that's certainly something we could provide. And this is
He's just rejoining as a panelist so he can share.
Hello, I think it just rejoined me into the call, sorry about that. So yeah, these are based on, I'm just looking at sort of regional precedents and, and local precedents for, for these housing types. So based on the available acreage on these sites and then the, the intent or potential densities and household sizes as well. So in Redwood Junction here in scenario one, we're estimating the approximately five hundred and, around five hundred and fifty new housing units. And in scenario two, upwards to, to around fifteen hundred in terms of the, the amount of capacity that could be accommodated on these sites. And so that would amount to in scenario one, about fifteen hundred in terms of new population or thirty-five hundred in new population.
One note I'll add to that is that those figures that David just quoted, that's inclusive of all the different proposed land uses across the entire station area, not just what you're seeing on the screen.
Correct.
Moving to the area directly south of the Redwood Junction Station Platform. Key difference you'll see between each scenario is on scenario one, there's more of a focus on flex industrial and office development. Where in scenario two, it's more of a mix. You'll see some flex industrial and office retained, but you'll also see a lot of high-density residential and some retail development woven in as well. And so what we heard from the Planning Commission on this was a preference for scenario one in particular. They just had some skepticism about their preference was not to have multifamily residential along every portion of Redwood Road. They just generally wanted to see more of a mix of uses kind of strung along the whole corridor. They just generally wanted to see more of a mix of uses kind of strung along the whole corridor. Finally, turning to the very southern edge of the, uh, Chesterfield neighborhood, uh. Scenario one. Big focus on small lot, single family, then in scenario two, uh, more of a focus on townhome, so comparatively, uh, dense. What we heard was a preference for small lot, single family. Because it's more in character with what is in the Chesterfield neighborhood currently. Finally, turning to the transportation improvements in Redwood Junction, uh, again, big focus on street grid improvements, uh, particularly. Uh, particularly paired with some of the potential new development, uh, south of the Redwood Junction. Uh, station platform. And then. Exploring the possibility of reconfiguring Redwood Road from six travel lanes to four travel lanes. And then just exploring what to do with the pedestrian bridge that currently serves, uh, Redwood Elementary. Not committing anything, not committing to anything, but in light of the potential, uh, closure of that school. Just exploring, uh, what, uh, what the future may be. Finally, turning to Decker Lake. When to focus on three key areas, uh, lot D, just along thirty-first South, uh, the current like for your portfolio servicing site. Across Decker Lake Drive from the Maverick Center and finally the Mavericks Center, uh. Maverick Center site, uh, itself. Just pausing one last time to look at some of the potential development types. One thing I'll mention right, uh, right up front is that, uh, the planning commission was generally supportive of, I'll say, going big on, uh, on Decker Lake Station area. Uh, they see this as a high visibility site, and so they generally had a preference for, or scenario two, so kind of the more intensive, uh, scenario in this case. But kind of looking at the SPS site, uh, itself first, uh, in scenario one, kind of more of a mix, uh, uh, more of a mix. Or I should say more of a focus on commercial retail, uh, throughout the site. With a hotel and surface parking lot on the southern portion of the site. Then in scenario two is where you have more of a mix of development types where you still retain some retail along Decker Lake Drive. Uh, but then you have a focus on kind of more intense residential, uh, and mixed use, uh, development in the interior of the site. Turning to lot D, recall, this is a long, uh, thirty-first South, kind of kitty-cornered from, uh, the Maverick Center, uh, site, uh, itself. Uh, and scenario one, more of a mix of residential, uh, development types, both townhomes and some, uh, apartments with a. Structured or, yeah, with a structured parking lot. And scenario two, again, more intense, more of a focus on apartments with a kind of a wrapped parking structure. Finally, turning to the Maverick Center, uh, site itself. Uh, and scenario one, more of a focus on providing surface parking and comparatively less intense mixed-use development. Whereas in scenario two, more intense mixed-use development with more of a focus on, uh, structured parking. Uh, I guess one commonality I'll mention between each scenario is this kind of planted or. Boulevard connecting the Maverick Center to the restaurants, hotels and different entertainment uses that are south. Uh, uh, of the, of the Maverick Center. One other thing I'll mention related to, uh, kind of the different scenarios you see for Decker Lake is it's our understanding. That there's a requirement for the city to provide a certain level or a certain number of parking spaces. Uh, within a certain distance of the Maverick Center. So some of the focus on structured parking that you see is an attempt to. Kind of balance the need to meet that requirement with kind of realizing the vision of kind of an entertainment district or entertainment center. Finally, just a quick overview of the transportation improvements in the Decker Lake Station area. Uh, again, focus on finding opportunities for street grid, uh, improvements, uh, you'll see that in particular in the red line three and. And the red line six in the right image. And finding opportunities for new bike pad facilities along Decker Lake Drive and thirty-first South. Uh, in, uh, particular, and are really making sure that, uh, all users, uh, kind of have their needs met, uh, in the station area. And also, uh, finding opportunities for crossing improvements across Decker Lake Drive. Uh, in light of the kind of proposed development on the SPS, uh, on SPS site. These are just some questions to consider, uh, in the discussion out of this similar kind of themes I mentioned at the head of going through the scenarios. Uh, but most importantly, I want to turn the time over to you all to kind of ask questions and really to have a. Open dialogue about, uh, the scenarios we've gone through. If I need to kind of go back to any of the slides so we can look at that in more detail, happy to do so.
Mention, I think you mentioned that the steering committee comprised of. Developers. Is there private sector interest in any of these locations, or are they just. There to provide input on what's feasible, I guess.
Uh, I'll direct that question to David for some more, I guess, detailed, uh, information. But I guess generally we heard, so. There was both developer involvement in the steering committee and we also did interviews with kind of private developers. And city staff and, and kind of different people throughout the station areas. And so it kind of, it kind of varied. I guess it varied greatly depending on the station area. Um, River Trail was generally seen as more of a longer term investment opportunity. Uh, just due to kind of some of the inherent access issues in the station. Area, particularly the Jordan, the Jordan River and only having access west to Redwood Road. Whereas Redwood Junction and Decker Lake are seen as near-term, relatively near-term. Uh, opportunities. David, did I, uh, did I capture that correctly, or would you add anything?
Yeah, I'd say that's, that, that captures it accurately. Generally speaking, sort of moving. Northeast throughout the study area, starting with Decker Lake is where you see the most near-term development potential. And then as, as Christian indicated, as you get up to, to River Trail is, is where it's most likely more long-term, I think the. The prospects around Decker Lake and the Maverick Center are, are great. I mean, there's a lot of. There's city on land there, um. Surface parking lots that do have a, you know, I know the city is contractually obligated to provide parking for the Maverick Center, but there's. Potential there to actually, um, move forward development just due to, uh, due to the. The ownership and control over some of the land there as well as the, the property owners nearby that are interested in development. So we had conversations with. With some of them, um, and I think. One of the conversations we've been having as a team is that. Due to all of the, um, maybe coordination that would be necessary to optimize that area and the opportunity to really create a. A unique entertainment district as it's being envisioned, really calls for perhaps a more detailed master planning process that incorporates. Property owners, those at the city, more detailed design and looking into the types of access and, um. And other types of improvements or potential funding sources that can go into improving that area. Um, but seeing that as, as definitely something with, with more near-term potential. Um, and then our conversations with developers, regional developers. Um, I think in general, particularly around Redwood Junction and River Trail, seeing both of those station areas as. The land. Generally being underutilized for, for land that's so close to a, to a regional transit stop. Um, however, in the, in the near term, just the cost of land being what it is, uh, development prospects are, are quite dim. Especially considering where, where interest rates are right now and just costs of construction and labor, et cetera, um. So that's what these scenarios represent. Most more generally is, is, um. You know, where due to existing costs of land, um, where a development could. Actually occur in the, in the near to medium term, uh, but with the caveat of understanding sort of. Near-term potential closer to Decker Lake and probably looking at more long-term potential as you move northeast through the study area.
Well, I think my comment or question is where do we start? And this is a lot of information, first time I'm seeing it. I don't know if people have seen it before. Um, to ask our opinions. I mean, it's just a lot to process, um. So I guess one of my main questions is we're supposed to come up with these station area plans. Are these just plans that then we're going to submit to the state? Is there a timeline for developing them? Is there, you know? What do we do after we decide on the plan? And, and when do we have to decide on that?
So, uh. Part of the procedure is the Wasatch Front Regional Council has to, I think the term is certify that the plans meet. The state requirements. And I guess I've adequately considered. Now those four kind of housing, transportation, environment and opportunity, uh, elements, uh, that are contained, uh, in state code. And then after there's kind of agreement with, uh, uh, with WFRC or with the regional council. Then, uh, uh, then that is submitted to the state. Now that said, uh. I don't know if it is a requirement specifically, but we feel strongly about. Yes. Your, your input in it, and so we would like this plan to be adopted ahead of time. But that is kind of a conversation to occur. At a later date and the scenarios themselves are not final.
Well, maybe chime in on that one too. So, so we, we do, we are required to adopt a plan, right? And so whether it's scenario one or two, or some hybrid or something different, that we are required to adopt something that then gets certified, as Christian said. The other thing I wanted to add is that state code not only requires that we adopt a plan, we also have to implement, uh. Land use regulations to, to then implement the plan. So basically we need to. Make zoning changes that would make these plans possible. And that, um, so those are, that's also something that's required by state code.
And what is the due date for our plan?
Uh, end of this year.
Okay, so we're not in a hurry.
Yeah, and then you said zoning changes, does that have to happen before the plans or after the plans, before the zoning change? After the plans.
After it gets approved and.
How are these integrated with the general plan and the moderate? We have to make changes to.
So it's, it's the, the, the stationary plans is in effect become part of the general plan. And, um, and the moderate income housing plan is also part of the general plans. There should be. I mean, there, there should be some, some overlap and, you know, communication between all of those, but it's all part of the city's general plan.
So one of our, today was just kind of an introduction and then we're going to add it to another commer, communication agenda. Probably the twenty-fifth. I gotta get my dates right, um, but this kind of gives you an introduction, you can go back and kind of look at it. See what sounds plausible and then we can ask more detailed questions on the twenty-fifth. Is to absorb it all and make a decision tonight, I. You know, midnight sounds kind of late. So we're just going to piece at it. We don't have to have it done till the end of the year, so. But I think we need to have something for Wasatch Front probably by August. Just so that I can go back and forth.
Then we're putting it out to a general. Public meeting on the twenty-fourth, right?
Correct.
Twenty-fourth of what, this month?
Twenty-fourth morning.
March, oh, March.
It's not our meeting.
Yeah, it's a public meeting.
Their meeting.
So as, as we review these three station areas, is it possible to review one at a time or should we look at all of them? Together. I, I mean, I don't know, you mentioned, you know, fifteen hundred housing units and I'd like to know. How those are dispersed throughout the three areas, that type of thing, so. Those are just questions I have. It's hard to evaluate it and decide what I'd like when I, you know, when it's pretty general at this time.
Yeah, and I think going on the twenty-fourth, if anybody's available to listen to the public comment. Are we inviting all three station plans to the one or are we doing them one at a time?
So all, it's, it's more of an open house format. We're all three invited. We'll have kind of, uh, stations, if you will, for each area. Get more information on.
Cause I think it'll take a few meetings to hash it out. So any other clarifying questions for? These guys, so they know what to prepare for the twenty-fifth? Okay. It blew their minds, they can't even speak.
Not sure if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Yes, to discuss them. One at a time.
At a time, yeah.
And when you have retail, are you talking? Like grocery stores and different things like that, or are you thinking retail? That's my one question, yeah. Because are any of these retail locations large enough for a grocery store?
We, we can get more into the, into those kinds of.
Those weeds, okay. That's the one question mark I wrote online. So.
Well, this kind of goes to the question about, you know, do we consider the station area separately? The answer to that question will depend.
Which scenario? Because it's kind of a food desert area down there anywhere and you add that many more people. We're gonna need, yeah, there's no grocery shop. Y'all know where I travel and you can just walk to any store. It's high-density all around. But you just walk five minutes and you're at a grocery store or a meat market or a bread store, fruit market. And so are we going to have that capability or a large? One shop takes care of everything. So. Okay, any other nuggets you want them to have before they? Can you talk again?
What time's the meeting on the twenty-fourth?
It's from four to seven, uh, PM. That's at the Utah Cultural Celebration Center, yeah.
It's that Monday night?
Monday night, yep.
Four to seven.
It should be on your calendars. I think they're putting it out.
Today.
Oh, today's today.
So today, okay. So if you haven't gone, I'll be more updated everything. Okay, I think we're good until next year, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council calendar, did anybody have any? Now that you've added this to your calendar, does anybody have any? Concerns or? Things I want added? So that is not on our calendar. We probably need to put that on our calendar.
Yeah.
There's gonna be more than one or two of us.
Yes, um, we just added it to the calendars today, so this is a little outdated, yeah.
Hey, no questions on the? Council calendar, potential future agenda items? Okay. You have one?
The only thing I wanted to bring up. Is, uh, just. Regarding the conversation we had last. Study session about Treasure Isle and us moving forward. So we presented a process before that included a public hearing. For that street, for the people to come, and one of the reasons we wanted to do that was so that again, it can be duplicatable. And then other streets, if we ever decided to other streets that we, you know, for this opportunity. We didn't discuss this this last time. We, we got the nod from the majority to go ahead, which we are planning. Uh, we're, we got our notices, we're getting our ready, uh, our notices ready to go. But we did feel like that, that was a piece that we wanted to have, and if you guys are okay with that. Uh, we can schedule that the next. Meeting and, and then.
On the twenty-fifth?
That'd be the twenty-fifth.
Be April, probably be April, yeah. We would just provide notice to everybody on the street, letting them know the date of the public hearing.
And then we'll have notices, yeah, we'll, we'll send the notices out. And then we're, we're ready to go, but we wanted to see if you're okay with that piece.
I think it's good to get there and put.
Okay, back to the council calendar. I thought we talked about some special meeting on the eighteenth. Did we?
And I'm not on there, is that not on there?
We'll make sure we.
We'll make sure we have.
All right, thank you.
All right, so no other council reports? Council report?
Yes, we had our South Salt Lake Valley mosquito abatement district meeting, we were meeting yesterday and few interesting things were brought up. It's warmed up just enough to have mosquitoes wake up. So we are starting to see mosquitoes in the area. It's earlier than normal. But they have prepared information to reach cities PIO. And I think they've contacted. So Sam here.
Roxanne?
They've contacted your office. Call them, I said they had, I will follow this. I told them, you know, you can send something out. I sent it out. He has to call me service, so I will. So calling up and just asking about it.
And that'll be information. Newsletters or anything else, just getting people aware of what's going on and that if they have problems, don't call a mosquito company to spray them. It's free. We pay for it with our property tax.
The mosquito abatement will come and spray.
Well, they will come and spray, they'll come and do what they need to do.
Could we put that on our website somewhere? Just an informational?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, and maybe even a Facebook or whatever you put it on.
He's got, they've got a lot of media stuff that they can just put in.
Okay.
What we need. And they just held their national meeting, all the mosquito abatement districts. We're all running into some of the same problems. One thing that I thought was interesting is we rotate our pesticide on a three-year basis.
So they don't get immune?
So they don't get immune. There are some areas that they can track it by specific areas. You know, well, we've used that pesticide in this area so many times, starting to get immune to it and change it. You know, on a yearly basis.
That's nice.
Like everything else, it's going up in price too.
Yes.
But we are aware of it and we are budgeting for it.
Okay. Any other council reports?
The Gerald Wright STEM Academy rebranding went well.
Yeah.
City engineers there at the booth, which is great.
Hopefully we'll pick up a couple engineers out of that in about twenty years. I tried talking two girls into it. I thought it looked fun. Okay, we do have need for a closed session for disposition of real property. And then we'll take care of that and close adjourned from that meeting with no other business. So if somebody could make that motion. You have a motion on second, Ms. Hammond.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Westone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hune?
Yes.
Councilmember Northville?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Link?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll give everybody five minutes to leave the appropriate people in their room.